I would like to call to order the special city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Mayor, before we take role, I would like to inform members of the public that Councilmember Sob and Councilmember Ashton are participating in the meeting via teleconference. Councilmember Ashton?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Sob?
Here.
Mayor Protem Prometa?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to have a vacation done by Councilmember Rick Rodriguez.
So I mentioned to the, oh shoot, sorry about that. I mentioned to the mayor that it's been a long time since we all met in this room. And it just seems applicable that the best thing we can do before we start our meeting is pray. And pray for our city and our county and our country and our state. Pray, just kind of the right thing to do for the right, at this time. So please, please join me and bow your head and a word of prayer. So Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, that we're able to come here again in this place. We're able to come here and meet, Lord, and we ask for a blessing of kindness, Lord. We pray that you teach us, Lord, how love is the only answer, the only answer that you can provide us. Lord, we ask that you guide us and guard us from other harshness that may come our way. Help us, Lord, be, learn to be the people that you want us to be, Lord. And Lord, as we go through this budget and we continually manage and drive our city forward, Lord, we ask for your divine intervention, your divine appointment to help us, Lord. Help us get there where you want us to be. We thank you, Lord, from all of our heart for being that one nation under God. We thank you and love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
And I would like to ask Mayor Protem Prometa to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pleasure, ma'am. We can please put our hands over our heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment on agenda items only. Those participating via teleconference may now call our teleconference phone line at (562) 299-6622. I will take phone calls first, followed by written public comment. Those present in the audience wishing to address the city council may form a line after written comments are read. Persons speaking are limited to a maximum of three minutes. For those calling in, you will be advised once your time has ended and the call will be immediately disconnected. For those who have submitted via email, your comments will be read into the record and no further public comment via teleconference or an in-person will be permitted. City Clerk Duarte, do we have any speakers on the phone?
We do not, Mayor.
City Clerk Duarte, do we have any written public comment on the agenda to be read into the record?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the city council regarding this item only? You may now step forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council wants staff. My name is Brian Hayman. I'm a resident of the city of Downey. First of all, I want to say that after reviewing of the budget document, I want to compliment everybody in finance, city manager's office and entire staff who had a role in producing that document. Very well read, excellent graphics, good charts, tables, et cetera. And I learned a lot from, from reading it. I don't think I have to remind all of you that we are facing the worst economic crisis in this country and in Los Angeles County since the depression of the 1930s. And while the budget is, in my opinion, kind of neutral, I really think it really does need to do more with regard to containing costs. To give an example, the parks, for all intensive purposes, are closed because of COVID or reconstruction. The library is closed because of reconstruction. Theater is closed because of reconstruction. Barbara J. Roddy is closed because of reconstruction. And the Space Center is closed because of COVID. Yet, we've not laid off one staff. All of those operations are shut down effectively. Not one staff is proposed to be laid off, one full-time equivalent staff. I just don't see how that can be reconciled going further. With regard to our revenue, from what I'm seeing in the budget, it only reflects through March 31st. The worst months were the collapse of revenue because of COVID shutdown are in April, May and into June. We need to get that information as well. I think there's a collapse in revenue that this budget just doesn't recognize. And I don't think it can continue to go forward with business as usual when we're facing a financial crisis. With regard to the purse contributions challenge, the only way to get a hold of that is either to make the employees contribute more or to lay off employees. The only way to put a cap on the current expenditure is to lay employees off. And with regard to these budget exercises that you're going through right now, County of Los Angeles tells every one of their department heads, come forward with a budget scenario, 10% cut, 20% cut, 30% cut. I think council should direct the city manager to tell his department heads, the next time they come back, come forward with three different budget schemes. We cannot continue to go forward as if there isn't anything to matter. There is, not just with our economy, but with our society and politically here. And it just is not a very good political optic for everybody in government, like yourselves and everybody in this room, to have jobs while the rest of us don't have jobs. And on top of that, to tell us all we got to stay home. Or we can't open our business, or that we can't peaceably protest. It just is not a good situation for the city. I'm so glad the city hall opened again on June 1st.
Mr. Hayman, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Hayman.
May I have more time, please?
No, I think that's enough, but I appreciate your comments and we're fortunate that we're not laying people, laying off people. So that's something that we should be proud of, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mr. Hayman.
You have to face it sooner or later, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hayman. Have a good day. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments? No, seeing none? Okay, we will now close the public comment period. We will now begin the budget study session, or is there any? We will now begin the budget study session. We will have a presentation and discussion of fiscal year 2020, 2021, proposed city budget. City manager, leave us. Do we have somebody giving us the report?
Madam Mayor, our finance director will give you the details of the budget. But I'd like to start with a couple of words. Can I get the clicker, please? I got a slide. Which one is it here? Thank you all for being here today to listen to this budget. Certainly, these are unprecedented times. I want to start off by thanking the employees who have worked really hard to get to us, to get us to a point where we are today. This particular budget process started back in January. We do this every year. We have Goals and Priorities workshop with the council. We meet individually with department heads and we make sure that the citizens' priorities are met every year. We continue to monitor that budget on a continual basis and we monitor the goals that we set out for the council every year as well. This year, I'm pleased to say that even with all that's going on, what's happening all over the country and all over the state of California, that the city is presenting a balanced budget for the seventh straight year. Reserve levels will not be touched. We have $30 million in our reserves and we're not dipping into those reserves. How did we balance this year's budget in tough times? We froze hiring. Contrary to what was just said, we laid off most of the part-timers who make up a majority of the positions in the departments that Mr. Hayman just referred to. They were all laid off. We have a total of seven people in Parks and Recreation that are continually doing things, for example, doing wellness checks for our seniors, providing over 1,900 meals to people who need them, putting out information, closing up parks. So the amount of people that are doing those things is very limited. Our library folks right now, most of them as well, and the Clemmer Mars Space Center, many of them were also laid off. Primarily, it's part-timers. So we have done that as well. We've cut programs, especially those that require large crowds. For example, our open streets, our concerts in Park, and those were, have been eliminated as well. We've put off equipment purchases unless they're essential to next year. And so those are things that we've done throughout the process. Let me say this, we're not waiting for a pandemic or recession to make cuts. We do that on a continual basis every day. We've made significant adjustments from the last time that we were in a recession. You know, we, if we don't pay attention to history, we're doomed, right? So we've continually done that in, over the years. And so I want to show you a couple of things here. So long before many of the cities did, we restructured our city employee benefits programs, including CalPERS and employee contributions over those years. And from fiscal 2008, 2009, we've reduced our staffing, kept our labor cost in check to a tune of 11% decrease. We, for example, just this year, we've contracted out our NV transportation and our transit and dial ride. And we've contracted our IT services out. So those are things that don't always get the fanfare, but those are cuts that we've made. And we're not waiting for a recession and we're not waiting for those things to be in a dire situation so that we can be in a position to balance a budget in tough times. So how do I know that? I'm about data and we make decisions based on data-driven decisions. So if you look at the 10 cities that are up there, those are 10 cities that we compare ourselves to when we do our budget negotiations and how we move forward. If you look at this particular chart, you look at the full-time employees, you look at the number of full-time employees per thousand population, right? Downey is number nine out of the 10 cities. With West Covina being the only one, and Covina, West Covina is really struggling right now. They've had some real issues. So we're the lowest of that. Mr. Hayman has brought up Santa Monica. Santa Monica has 23 positions per thousand people. So obviously, they had to make some cuts. I'm not looking to the state or the county for direction on how to balance a budget. I'm sorry, they just are not the examples that we lead by. We look at our, our full-time equivalency here and that's the data that shows. So we're running, we're running already very lean. So even with that limited amount of employees, what we've been able to achieve is short of nothing but remarkable. Over that time, we've had extensive use of technology to enhance our efficiencies. For example, installing LED lighting in Civic Center to saving $200,000 a year. We've entered into an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for all our vehicles. So we've contracted those services out and we've saved on a couple of positions. Again, we have eliminated positions that were frozen, that no longer are needed, and we continue to make service cuts. And we've saved $193,000 a year just in that. Our telephone system has saved an enormous amount of revenues also. Our innovation team, which I created several years ago to come up with a way to save money for the city on an ongoing basis, and it's come up with savings on, for programs and projects, saving $483,000 on an annual basis. This year, the innovation team also proposed to implement a Cronus workforce-ready telestaff and schedule of software solutions for our timekeeping, which will save us a tremendous amount of time in sick leave and in overtime and just sheer mistakes that happen when you're using paper. We've also updated the city's fuel dispensary system to reduce errors and staff's time and to make sure that we are using our fuel in the appropriate manner and making sure that our vehicles are also tuned to the, to the best maintenance that they can possibly have in order to save money. We've also instituted a proactive approach to securing grants. And I will tell you that grants are not easy to get. You have to be very competitive. Over the last six years, the city has secured over $60 million in grants. Now, how do we know that we're efficiently run? We look at the different awards that we've received over the last straight year. We have the Government Finance Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award that we've got for seven straight years. The CSFMO Excellence in Budgeting for seven straight years, on and on. But one of the couple of them that are really important is the International City and County Management Association Performance Management Award, which basically says that you're making data-driven decisions. What we're looking as we, through this budget, we're not just sticking our finger in the air and saying, well, we think. We're not thinking, we're making it based on data. The numbers that you see in this particular budget are based on our consultants who have many, many years, our tax consultant, Hunter Leiter Delamas, who does projections and forecasting all up and down the state. And so we look at their particular projections, they help us come up with these particular numbers. The other thing is our credit rating is double A plus. It's the highest it's ever been. And it's the highest it's ever been because of the efficiencies that we have. When we do the credit rating, they come in and turn our finances upside down. They look at our labor costs, they look at everything that we do to make sure that before they do a bond approval, that we are in a position to pay it back. In fact, we were so successful that we were, we had far more people lined up to buy our bonds than we had available. So, and that just goes to the credit of the city council and the finance department making sure that those things, you know, happen. Finally, I do want to say that this budget is based on estimates from our tax consultants, I said. But it's a budget, right? And so we continue to monitor it and we will do that over the year. We will change and reverse course if we need to. We are in the process of doing that on a weekly basis, especially as we move forward through this pandemic. We're fortunate to be in a position where we don't have to lay off people. If you've ever had to do that, it's a painful process. We're in the business of providing service and our business is human capital. We don't make things. What we do is make service and we make sure that people are safe. We recently had some police and fire association contracts that came up. Did we approve those? Absolutely. We want the best and the past is expensive, but our residents deserve the best. So two-thirds of our budget goes to essential services, meaning fire and police. That's where our budget is. That's where most of our, our money is at. And I think that the residents have spoken loudly in terms of what they expect from this council is that we want to make sure that our police and fire are adequately funded. Any positions that we have added over the years have primarily come in fire and police. That's where bulk of all our positions have come. In fact, I can't think of very many that have been added over the last five years or so. So that said, that's where the priorities are, council. I want to thank the council for their support. We're in a unique position given what's happening around us. There are a lot of cities that are not in this position because they haven't planned and they haven't done the appropriate forecasting to make sure that they're in this position. I don't look to the county. I don't look to the state. I would never want to say that the county is the example to be looked at for managing a budget. I think the budgets are managed best by locals in their respective cities. And I would say that Downey is an aspirational city because of the ability to manage our finances. And so as things move forward, we will keep an eye on the ball and make sure that things are carried out. And the big thing is, ladies and gentlemen, we still have $30,000, $30 million in our reserve that we're not touching. So that if we need to dip into those reserves next year, the following year, what you're really looking at is a, is a forecasting that looks not just at next year, but the next two years. So that if we need to dip into those reserves for those years, we're ready. So we're not using our ammunition now. We're saving it for if we do in fact need it. So with that, I would like to extend a big thank you to Mr. Gandhi who has been here throughout this process. Mr. Gandhi was a finance director in City of West Hollywood. He had retired and came out of retirement specifically. He promised me a couple of years, it's five years later, and I'm thankful for him guiding us through this. So, Mr. Gandhi, if you could please provide the details of the budget, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, and ex-Mayor Rodriguez. Make you happy. So we'll start with this slide over here. This is the executive summary for the upcoming year budget. The first line is beginning reserve, July 1, 2020, which will be the end of this fiscal year. We started this fiscal year, when I said this fiscal year is the current fiscal year, 1920, with $30 million in reserve. In the current year, we are going to add another $4 million through the reserve. That's because of the sale of the Stewart and Gray property. We sold it for 5.4 million. $4 million belongs to general fund and 1.4 belongs to the water fund. So I'm showing 4 million in the first line in the beginning reserve, 30 plus 4, 34 million. That's our beginning reserve for the current year. Purpose operating revenue for the fiscal year 2021. Now, by this revenue, revenue numbers are pre-COVID. And I'll go into the COVID, COVID numbers later. It's $106,858,000, which includes $10.6 million sell of land on the back 20 at the promenade. Operating expenditures for 2021 is $98 million, leaving us a revenue or expenditures of $8.6 million. We add to the beginning reserve, our, if there was no COVID, we would be finishing the year with $43 million in a reserve. What a feeling. Now, the next line item is fiscal year 1920 COVID. This for three months. What is the impact of the COVID right now on the city's finances for the general fund is 4.6 million. For the next year, the 2021, is 8 million. Total global picture for the COVID is 12.7. We can say about $13 million that will take heat on our revenue. And then I'll go and I'll explain you where those numbers are coming from. That leaves us the ending fund balance of 30 million again. What we started, we kind of ended up with 30 million. That's the executive summary in nutshell. The next slide is our proposed revenue, which is, I mean, $108 million. Sales tax is a big red bar over there, 29 million, which is about 27% of the revenue. The next is utility, the next is going down is 6%, 6.7 million. Franchise fee is 4.4, other is 15 million. That's a, the port where you have a lot of other revenues, which makes 15 million. Charges to other funds is 2 million. Transfers from other funds, like gas tax, water fund and other funds is 5.2 million. Sell of property we just talked about, back 20 is 10.6. Another big piece of revenue is property tax, 30.6 million.
Excuse me, Neil, can I ask a question? This is Councilman Alex Sob.
Yes, sir.
So I know the governor had, had, I guess, waived or postponed the sales tax right now until, until next year for businesses. Is that correct?
That's correct. Till end of the year.
Right. It's a deferral. So, but that's going to obviously go to, those, those numbers that are projected to come in are going to go to the 2019, 2020 budget, correct?
So, so it's, it's, the revenue has been shown in full. There's no impact on the revenue because of the referral is a timing of cash coming into the city's treasury.
Okay, okay.
So, so that you are, so there are two, two, two aspects. There is a first revenue for the businesses under certain amount. They go three months to pay and then for some other body else. And then it's another six months to pay. So in total, it's about six months.
Okay, and then that's reflected on the adjust, obviously you made the adjustment, right? In the, in the premium.
No, no, it's not part of the adjustment. I really, I don't look at those. Those are my cash flow issues. Those are not my revenue issues.
Okay.
It's just, it's just instead of getting my, my money in three months, I get it over six months. But the revenue number is good.
Okay. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be significantly less though? I mean, given the businesses were closed, things like that?
Yeah, the, the, what will be less will be part of my COVID numbers that I, where I show you. 4 million for the three months in fiscal year.
Okay, so that, so it's in that, it's, that's in that, in that number?
Yes, it is in that number.
Okay, so it is, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, 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 please go ahead. I mean, I appreciate your questions. So these are our different revenue items by line item, property tax. There is no COVID effect on property tax. That will get 100%. People might be late in paying their property tax bill, if any, but, but we'll still get that money over a period of time, maybe six months later. But, but I expect to correct that entire amount in one fiscal year.
Neil, can you, can you explain, can you explain for members of the public, you know, why, why, obviously this is not your opinion, right? These are, these are, this comes from our, from our expert.
Right.
TLD, TLD, right? So they're called? HDL, excuse me, HDL. Can you explain then that, you know, just why, why that's the case? Because I think the misconception that people have is, it's going to be, right?
There's always, always a time difference. People don't, right now, people will not file their appeals in reduction in property value because the property value won't go down right away. Maybe a year down the road, if any, if the economy doesn't pick up. And these numbers are predetermined a year earlier.
Right, so we wouldn't see the effect for probably two years, if, if.
That's correct, two years. But, but just to make sure that, after a year, I would know what, what appeals are filed. What's in the pipeline, even if it takes two years. But, but, but right now, there is no effect on property tax for that matter.
Right, because it has to do with the amount of sales, of closings and, yeah.
Councilmember Sob, even at that, what the experts are saying, because there is a housing shortage, which you had, for example, during the great recession was you had an oversupply and you had houses built on spec. What you have today is really a market-driven shortage of housing. So they don't anticipate, even if prices come down, it's not going to be that significant. So even if two years down, you see appeals, it wouldn't be that dramatic.
We, thank you.
Next, next line item is sales tax, 29 million, 242. Now, this is a pre-COVID number. If, if there was no COVID, we would be adding million to the sales tax. But because of the COVID, that number, 29 million number, will be less, 4.5 million. It'd be more like 25 million. But, but I'll go, I'll talk about the COVID later. Utility users tax, 6.7 million and $160,000 less than last year. That's because, I mean, really, the landline is, is becoming obsolete now. Majority of our utility user tax comes from the landline. Franchise fee, 48,700, it's pretty much the same, same thing with JPCC ambulance. Other, on a $15 million, $50,000 is nothing. It's plus minus. Charges to other funds, same thing, 900 bucks. Transfer from other fund is million three. That's because of the gas tax. We are getting more transfer out of gas tax fund in this year. And then the sale of property. That's, that's totally about 106 million, difference of 12 million over the two years. These are different bar graphs for you to look at later. This is utility user tax. And if you can see on my, on far right, the telephone, the blue bar is going down under the telephone. Gas and electric is going up and that's what's saving us. The gas and electric kind of. And, and that's what's saving us. The gas and electric kind of makes up for the telephone, decline in telephone revenue. And then this is the different taxes on the bar graphs, property tax, sales tax, utility user tax, and then in total. For the total taxes, as you see, it's about sixty six million. And, and when we, when we go to the expenditure side, that's probably what our public safety is, about sixty five million. This is the sales tax charge. And you see the red top on the, on the yellow bar on the far right. There's a COVID that we will not get this year of the twenty nine million. That's, that's our loss this year. Maybe not, who knows, if the economy picks up and. Now, this is the COVID. Over two fiscal years. I go to the first call, I mean, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one, and then total column. Under nineteen twenty, we show a reduction of three point six million for sales tax. A two point six from the city's sales tax and million dollars from the major S sales tax coming to three point six. Then we go down the bar, TOT is three hundred and ninety four thousand in this fiscal year. UUT is hundred and fifty thousand and other, which is like building, building fees, planning fees. And other miscellaneous revenue down about five hundred thousand.
The TOT, the seven fifty, the increase, is that, is that because of the new?
No. The seven fifty for the next year. I'm showing TOT fifty percent reduction in revenue for the next year. One of, one of the most hit industry is, is the hotel industry. And I think that, that, that might be, that's the worst hit we'll take is on the TOT. We do about one point five a million. I expect maybe we'll do about fifty percent of that, seven hundred and fifty thousand. This is, this is my most conservative estimates. Anything, it will be on more, if, if anything, it will be a more positive number end of the year.
Councilmember Sob, this does not include any projections if there was a TOT measure on the ballot, which will, you know, quite frankly, we're not sure that's going to move forward, but that does not include any of that.
Okay, thank you.
So for the fiscal year nineteen twenty in total in the red, you see we're going to lose about four point six million. And for the next year, for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, is eight million dollars. Between the two fiscal years, which is about fifteen months, from March to, March fifteenth to really end of next year, is about twelve point seven million that we expect that we will not collect this money. But at the same time, we don't know really. There's no crystal ball that we can tell you what the exact number is going to be. I was, I was reading the news this morning. Toyota said that their month of May sales, they did not expect, but they were so good on the May, month of May sales. The retail sales, where they are taking a bidding is in their fleet cells or the rental cars. That sells, that sells is down. That does not affect us. What affects is the retail sales and the details is showing promising numbers. So I mean, if there is some hope here, that we'll get out of this soon, faster than later. These are general fund expenditures. Police is forty percent, it's about forty million. Fire is twenty five million, is twenty five percent. It's about sixty five percent between the two. Public works eight percent, parks and rec ten percent. CDD five percent, community development transfer out five hundred and fifty thousand. And general government is eleven million, which is about twelve percent. And I'll go over that. General government went up, overall, if you, if you look at the bottom line number, hundred million for the nineteen twenty fiscal year and ninety eight million for the twenty twenty one fiscal year. From the nineteen twenty budget, the last item, transfer out seven point four. If I take six million out of there, which was the transfer of transfer to Major S for the capital projects. Then it's ninety four million expenditure and this year is ninety eight million. About increases of three point eight million dollars between the two fiscal years, which is about four percent, about five percent increase in expenditures between the two fiscal years. Now let's go.
That's on account of what, on account of what?
So that's where I'm going next. So that's about four million dollars and that strictly makes up salaries and benefits. Salaries, overtime, minimum manning, cars insurance, healthcare, workers' comp. That in total is four million. And that's what you're really, your, your increases between the two fiscal years. Now, general government went up by million dollar, the first line of the one, of that half a million dollar, five hundred thousand is for the elections for the next coming year. In November, that's what county is going to charge us. The police went up by two point four, seven percent. One of the reasons, there should be about five percent, but the two percent is because of the asset forfeiture. We don't have any money in the forfeiture up to this year's. We were we used to charge, a portion of the overtime was charged to asset forfeiture. Now this year it will be charged through the general fund and that makes up that number a little bit higher than normal. Fire is eight, eight percent now, but two or three percent higher than, than the, than the rest of the average in the city. But that's what, that's how their numbers are trending for the minimum manning and overtime. And sometimes because of the falls they get for the member of understanding for the fires outside of the county. And, and some of the overtime is built in there. And that's what, that's why their number is a little higher. Public works, seven percent of that, two, about two percent is the street lights, which we charge to the gas stacks. And then we get that money back from the gas tax. So that money is included in general fund right now. But eventually we'll get that money back and they'll bring the number back to five percent. Parks and rec, because the changes that the city manager and the parks and director talked about for the theater, aquatics program and the downtown events. Those three combined with their, whatever their increase was for the, for the labor, turns into negative of fifty four thousand. Community development department, million dollars minus lower than last year. Last year, Mr. Schindler had two million dollars of general plan. This year he is one million in general plan, a reduction of million dollars. Plus, Mr. Schindler has a couple of positions frozen in his department. And going back to public works also, Mr. Delphino is frozen about three or four positions in his department in next year. Going back to CDD, Mr. Schindler is frozen, I think, one, one intern, one full-time, two positions in his department. The million dollars of the general plan that is not going to use this year. In turn, that what makes up his number a little bit on the, on the positive side for me, but really he's still at break even. And then the transfer out of five hundred and fifty thousand to, to the space setter. The general fund subsidize every year from five hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand. This year it turned out to be five hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that's your, that's your expenditure in nutshell for ninety eight million dollars up. I mean, overall, between the two fiscal, two fiscal years of four million dollars, which is about five percent that it went up. And it's all strictly to your inventory, which is your personnel. These are the bar, bar graphs that you can look at. These are the general fund curves. What are the curves rates for the, for the next five years? This, if you, it's broken down into two categories, miscellaneous and public safety. If you look at the nineteen twenty, the miscellaneous was thirty eight point two percent. It will go up to forty two point five percent in five years. Same, same thing with public safety, fifty six percent. And it will go to sixty seven point one percent in twenty five, twenty six. But on the other side of the coin is that the miscellaneous pays three percent, four, three or four percent to the, their, their portion of the purse. So does fire and police. They pay, they pay a portion of their force in the fund from their payroll. The next slide is the first recap. By fiscal year, total wages, miscellaneous pension, fire pension, police pension, total pension and grant total. If you see the, for the twenty twenty one, total wages is forty million. And blended pension between the police and miscellaneous is twenty two million, more than fifty two percent. I mean, more than fifty percent, maybe more like fifty six percent, I think. And, and then I've given you forecast for next five years. And city manager have talked about this, how to tackle this issue and we're going to look into it, how we can reduce our pension cost. And this is the graph on the purse. The bar graph. I gave you the numbers before. Now this is the chart. This is the economic overview prior to COVID nineteen. Thanks, Wanya. Wanya did this for me. Entering into the new decade, the US continued to make economic history by extending hundred and twenty six months of continuous growth. This is pre-COVID, the first three bullets. Despite the trade conflict, growth continued solidly in two thousand nineteen at an annualized rate of two point three percent. And projected to continue at or slightly below to the two percent mark in twenty twenty. Unemployment rate at historic level, level, three point five percent. Now we talked about COVID. The US economy dramatically changed in the March twenty twenty as a result of the rapid onset of the COVID nineteen pandemic. COVID nineteen has caused the first pandemic induced recession of the post-war era, creating unprecedented financial outlook. Peril, employment fell by twenty point five billion. Changes reflect the effect of coronavirus pandemic and efforts to contain it. Unemployment rate, fourteen point seven percent in April. That's the official government number, but unofficial number is more like twenty percent. And if you compare government rate to government rate in the previous slide, we were at three point five percent all time low about a month back. And now we are at fourteen point seven percent. This is the highest rate, the largest over month to month increase in history of dot series. Seasonally adjusted data available back to nineteen forty eight. Average hourly rate in April, projected to increase to four point six percent inflation. Pre-COVID was CPA increase one point five percent over twelve months in the US. Now it's projected to decline in upcoming years, months. CPA declined point four percent February to March. Unemployment in March, biggest unemployment claim of any state with two point four million applications in the three weeks. This is in March. Approximately twelve percent of the civil workforce. Unemployment rate five point three percent increase from four point two in March of two thousand nineteen. Today I read that the, the claims for unemployment is going down now. People are getting back to work. Things are opening up and hopefully economy will pick up and we'll get some money in the city's coffers. Housing market cooling, original new daily listing prior to the statewide order was at four hundred and seventy eight in Southern California dropped to two seventy eight, two hundred and seventy after the order. Individuals are removing from homes from listing and escort transition are falling through. But there really does not affect the, I mean, market. I mean, the people are removing their homes because they don't want people to come in their homes. New housing construction permits are forecasted to drop by more than twenty one percent in the upcoming year. Just to be seen. The state budget, projected forty, fifty four billion dollar budget deficit. Economic overview down, revenues and expenditures for nineteen twenty significantly changed due to nineteen. Local economy seeing dramatic decline. Significant, significant impacts to the states, cities, sales and TOT tax for upcoming year. Flowing down in housing market. Unemployment has risen to five point nine percent in Downing. Major, major affected areas are leisure and hospitality. Challenges ahead, unknown future. The duration of recession depends on how fast the nineteen health crisis curtail. Sales TOT, property tax growth declining due to the close business and deferral of payments. Ongoing increase in pension costs. Growth in expenditures outpaced the growth in revenues. You know, I, I was looking at the nineteen seventy five GAFR financial report. And it's, it's amazing to see, even then, even in nineteen seventy five, they were showing deficit. So that's, that's conclude my presentation for the for, for the budget this afternoon. If there are any questions?
Any questions?
Were you, were you looking at the nineteen seventy five budget for fun?
Believe me, that's my life.
Great report.
Yes, thank you. Great report.
Very, very good report, Anil.
Thank you.
So now what we have is we have the various departments coming up to give a brief presentation on their respective budgets.
I'll be, I'll be next.
There you go. Thank you.
You don't even know of me, that's why. But you know, I'll, I'll make it life is it for you. From all this list, I'm only going to read one line. Finance department performance at the highest professional standard, all aspects of the fiscal administration for the city. Thank you. The next one is going to be IT.
Excellent again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gandhi. After Madam Mayor, number three counsel. For IT. Latter half of the presentation, which is the upgrades. The goal for this fiscal year really is to upgrade majority of the city's systems. The reason for all these upgrades is really the, you know, the city's own perpetual license with Microsoft. And we were really trying to use up all license licensing that we could till the end of support, which Microsoft has announced. So, you know, we really are due for upgrade at this point. But we did, we had to get our money's worth. Licensing that we own were pretty much for, pretty much ten years worth of it. So this coming, this year really, really, there'll be a lot of upgrades going on in the city. IT accomplishment, upgrading the fire department mobile data computer system. We upgraded the fire department fleet of mobile computers that inside the apparatus for the fire truck. We deployed those recently. Relocation of the fire dispatch center due to Measure S. That was a major undertaking. To move a nine one one dispatch center was no small task. IT was very much involved in this whole process. The three piece of, of the whole communication center was obviously the nine one one system online. The CAT system, the, what do you call it, the CAT, which is what dispatcher uses to communicate. And then obviously the radio system. So all three can either go in parallel and obviously seamless. So for that, for us to move dispatch out of our station one and then move on back in, which we were successfully able to accomplish this year. Upgrade of the fire department microwave system. That is a bigger picture of, of the, of the upgrade for dispatch. The microwave system really is Downey's ability to dispatch for Compton and Safeway Spring and the communication in Area E. That was also a major upgrade of the whole infrastructure for the fire department. And the police department also benefit from that part of it as well with the microwave. Establishment of a regular cybersecurity awareness training and user training. That's been started, as you might have know, council members, we briefly on that. We did a baseline test to see how well city staff were prone to phishing attempts. And the result was we range around thirteen percent for city staff. The industry standard or minimum, if you will, was about fifteen percent. So we, we were below that, which is good. But as, as we all know, all we, all it takes is just one weak link and one employee who clicks on a. infected email, and that would infect the city. So we still have a lot to do, but training has been going on. Most of the city staff has received some online training already, and that's still ongoing, and I'll be continue on for as much as needed. Implementation of mobile device management system to track and manage city issued devices. This is really more for a lot of the iPads and iPhones that we show up from city to city employees. We didn't have that before, and it's really getting challenging as we have more and more application that are online and mobile. So we implement that and allows IT to really manage the system and push out updates and give us certain standards, so that way, you know, all the applications function and work correctly. Lastly, city voice override telephone system upgrade, that was upgraded fortunately prior to the COVID, and that allow our system to really accommodate a lot of employees that had to work from home and allow us to, you know, turn on certain features so that they can get phone ordered to their cell phones and all that, so they can work from home. So that was part of the upgrade. That completes. Those are all the goals that we more or less touched, which was, you know, all the upgrades that IT has accomplished. That completes IT presentation, is there any question I can help answer?
Any questions?
Yes, I do have one, Madam Mayor. You mentioned the cybersecurity awareness training and where we stand at 13 percent versus the industry average. How often are we going to do a retest? Annually, semi-annually, to see how well we're decreasing that number? Because we're right on the cusp, I'm glad to hear we're under, but it'd be nice to see a lower number.
That's a very good question. We're doing it pretty much quarterly at this point, and the system has ability to where employees who failed the test, where they click on it once, they will be put into a group where they get retested and get trained more further, further training, if you will. But at this time, it's pretty much quarterly. And we can always change that, if we deem necessary to increase the training or the testing more frequently, we would change that.
Thank you, great presentation.
Thank you, great presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the short budget of the City Attorney's Office. So the accomplishments for this past fiscal year, essentially, my office's priorities are the same as those of the department. We provide, I provide a wide range of legal services to promote the objectives of the council through city departments. I'm also involved in assisting in the evaluation of pre-litigation claims, doing evaluations, seeing how we can settle, or how we can get those off of the city's books. Increased involvement of employees in the city's risk pool, a lot of training, risk management, and really bringing to the forefront all the resources of our risk pool, which is ICRMA. Over the past fiscal year, my office has updated several city ordinances and policies to meet current legal standards. One example is updating our campaign finance ordinance in anticipation of the election this year. We continue to reduce the number of litigation matters and to seek third-party indemnification appropriate. Sometimes the third parties might be involved in a lawsuit we're involved in. We try to bring that party in to defend the city and cover the judgment if there are any. We do, I do a lot of that, and addressing, basically since March, is stressing, addressing the pressing needs of the city during this COVID-19 local emergency, being available during office hours, outside of office hours, weekends, working to address issues that come up, have come up during the local emergency. So that's been pretty much in a nutshell what I've been pretty much focused on in this last fiscal year. For the next fiscal year, obviously, I want to continue to be involved with the departments, making sure that any big projects or major objectives or goals that the department wants to achieve, and I'm there to assist trying to reduce our active litigation cases and reduce legal fees. I'd like to continue to review pre-litigation claims for early resolution. Also work with community development in updating the new planning commissioner handbook in anticipation of the upcoming year 2021. And then picking up some in-house training for commissioners and boards on Brown Act, Public Records Act, and ethics. Is there any questions that ends the City Attorney's Budget and Presentation?
Questions?
No, I would just like to tell you, Yvette, you know what? I really appreciate your effort, your pre-litigation stuff, the, just the aggressive nature you have of saving our city money, because you know, one good lawsuit could really take us out, and you really help us prevent that stuff, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
I echo that, thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
I agree, especially during this time that we've been dealing with COVID-19, and we've had so many questions, legal questions, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pacheco, Members of the City Council. I'll be providing a brief presentation regarding the accomplishments for fiscal year 1920 for the City Manager's Office, as well as our goals for the upcoming budget year. For fiscal year 1920, the city had obtained the ICME Performance Measure Certification Award. This award is given to jurisdictions who pride themselves in providing a culture focused on performance measures and also data-driven decision-making. The city also increased followers and posts across all social media platforms. To be more specific, we were able to increase our followers by 9,200, and this is the efforts of staff by doing regular posts, doing creative posts, not just flyers, but videos, incorporating animation, also strategic timing, and making sure, most importantly, that we're engaging with our community members as they have put questions or requesting feedback from the city. We also redesigned the city's website, and we've put on a widget on the corner for ADA to increase both user-friendly and make it more accessible to the public. We continue to oversee enhanced education on the city's Coyote Management Plan, so we had launched a Cood volunteer group that has gone on proactively into neighborhoods to notify of possible coyote sightings, and also done some public education. We continue to oversee implement Measure S projects, which has been led by our Assistant City Manager, coordinated various Measure S groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and we also pivoted a little bit during the COVID-19 pandemic. We have done digital or virtual grand openings to making sure that we're informing our public that we're still continuing those. We have held several successful events such as the Girls on Fire Summit Program, Downey One Day Service, Veterans Day, and Trade Learning Ceremony. We've worked with PD to revitalize the city's Business Watch Program to make sure we educate the businesses on tools and resources of how they can reduce their chances of being victims to crime. We also translated vital city documents to Spanish, which is in line with our language access program to making sure that we are reaching out to individuals with limited English proficiency. And like most departments in the city, actually all departments, we have done a lot of efforts regarding the COVID-19 response and recovery. That includes updating our websites, our hotline, managing that, social media, and coordinating events. For the goals for the upcoming year, we plan to continue increasing social media followers, increase ongoing public communications regarding sitting awards and achievements, to continue to highlight the city's positive efforts in the community. We also will be developing a benchmarking process for city operations services, will be coordinating with different departments to look at key performance indicators and benchmark them against other agencies and other information so we can continue our data-driven efforts when we make decision-making. We'll be finalizing the completion of Measure S projects, also the Measure S Completion Celebration Day, of course, after COVID-19 has ended. We plan to put a celebration day to not only commemorate the completion of Measure S, which is the historic most capital improvement program, robust capital improvement program we've had in the city's history, but also as a way to say thank you to the public for their patience and also their trust in the city as we go forward with Measure S. Open the city's Downey store, so this is actually a goal from last year, and city's staff have done an excellent job of creating designs and purchasing merchandise, but unfortunately with COVID-19, we couldn't actually launch the store, so we're hoping to do that this fiscal year. We're planning to create a Downey Arts Council, where local art organizations can come together and brainstorm ideas and launch crowdfunding campaigns for pieces, events, and programs throughout the city. Develop an in-house theater company, personal theater in-house on the second floor of the theater, and explore a state gallery incorporation. We're also going to be looking to activating the plaza between City Hall and the theater and the roundabout area. And lastly, explore homeless shelter solutions and also partnering with LA County. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Questions?
No, I just want to make a comment, there's a whole legislative platform also that City Manager's Office handles, and Vanya spearheads that, and, you know, tracking legislation. There are many times that we have to mobilize other cities to fight against bills from Sacramento that really create harm in our local city, and so Vanya does that, and I want to thank her for that. But what I really want to also thank, there's a couple people in the audience, Vanya, Judy, Maria, who through this COVID pandemic period, you know, we really shifted gears really quickly. They're the folks behind the scenes that are getting information out right when the county issues their orders, making sure that it's on our social media platforms, make sure that residents are informed, whether it's closing the park, opening the park, in real time, pivoting quickly, and so they're the folks behind the scenes doing all of that. So thank you to these three women who do a remarkable job, don't always get the credit that they deserve, so thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to echo what was said. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Too often, city governments are often said, we don't act enough, quick enough, fast enough, communicate well enough, and over the last several weeks with COVID-19 response, and certainly with the civil unrest we're experiencing, it is remarkable, the work that you ladies are doing in ensuring that we keep the communication flowing and keep our residents informed. So thank you for the work that you do behind the scenes, thank you.
I agree, you've all done an amazing job. It's a lot of work that you put in, several posts even throughout the day, so it's just made my job a lot easier, so thank you to the three of you, great job, thank you.
You're up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to share with you today a couple of the items that HR has completed this year and what we're looking forward to for next year. So we'll start, some of the items from this year, HR completed recruitment and selection processes, establishing 85 eligibility and hiring lists, which resulted in the hiring of both 53 full-time and 125 part-time employees. These numbers included six police officers and also five firefighter paramedics. Also this year, HR completed labor negotiations with the Firemen's Association, Fire Management Association, and also just recently the Downey Police Officers Association. And also, HR processed slightly over 1,000 personnel status reports, which are for authorized payroll transactions that we do throughout the city's payroll system as part of that maintenance. Also this year, we also this year, we updated and established a multi-year, part-time, hourly pay schedule to address the scheduled state minimum wage increases and also to address compaction amongst our part-time positions. We also offered 14 training sessions on a wide variety of topics to help employees and supervisors enhance their skills, and we also implemented the use of an online training program that the city is currently using for harassment prevention training. And for next year, we're hoping, looking to complete labor negotiations with our miscellaneous, our maintenance, and our public safety employee associations. We're also looking to expand the use of our online training and learning management software to more safety and also other employee skills, just to help them in the completion of their positions. We're also looking to conduct an additional 10 to 20 training sessions on a wide variety of topics, including supervisory skills, performance evaluations, managing safety and risk, and also management rights, and also harassment prevention of workplace. So that concludes my presentation for HR, thank you for the opportunity to share with you, does anybody have any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Members of the City Council, City Manager Leva, thank you for the opportunity to present the city clerk's accomplishments and goals this afternoon. Some of our accomplishments this year have been to, we identified an agenda management software for a paperless agenda creation, approval, and publishing process. The contract approval and implementation is in progress, and we plan to bring that contract to the City Council for approval at the June 23 meeting. We updated the city's records retention schedule citywide to maintain compliance with veteran law. We conducted voter registration outreach at National Night Out, we hosted a voter registration table at City Hall, and coordinated with the LA County Register Recorder's Office for the installation of a permanent vote-by-mill drop box at City Hall, or in the Civic Center area. We facilitated voter registration training for the youth commission by the LA County Register Recorder's Office, and we collaborated with the youth commission to host four pre-voter registration events at the high school. We've also processed and responded to approximately 774 public records requests. We did see an increase in our public records requests this year of 75 additional requests. We've also had 45, processed 45 subpoenas for records. We've posted 29 city council meeting agendas, transcribed 45 city council meetings. We've processed over 100 city council approved agreements and contracts, processed 62 city council resolutions, and 35 city council ordinances. We conducted 25 bid openings for public works on Measure S projects. Eight of those bid openings were held in the outside area of City Hall due to the COVID-19 closure. We've managed STCC filings for 100 conflict of interest filers in the city, including eight campaign committees, and we've electronically transmitted 400 documents from city departments to the Register Recorder's Office for recording through our in-house system. Next year, our goals are to host an STCC training for candidate committees and churches to successfully manage the November 3 municipal election for three council districts. We hope to identify and implement an electronic public records request management software and work with the city attorney to conduct the city's conflict of interest code by annual review. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, questions, comments? Thank you, great job.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me, my report for the year. I'll start with the Columbia Memorial Space Center. We had a busy year, starting off in July of 2019 with the 50th anniversary celebration of the historic Apollo 11 landing, that got us international press coverage, The New York Times and others, First Mayor's Movie Night. We were able to technically on July 1, secure the $5.8 million in state funding for an expansion of the space center, and further connect us with other partners. and further connect us with other partners, including the Film Academy and the National Science Foundation. National Science Foundation grant in our world is a pretty prestigious honor to be a part of, and it's a partnership with Cerritos College. Next year, obviously, we've kind of switched gears since the middle of March. We've increased our online presence. And in fact, they're pivoting almost all of our educational programs to a virtual platform, working with the Los Angeles Unified School District, Down Unified, and some others to make up for our field trip business by embedding ourselves in the classroom day. We've also used our 3D printers to prepare PPE, and that will continue on in the next year. We're going to figure out how to do our events virtually, including Rocket Fever 2020, which will be an all virtual event, but will still include rocket launches. And also next year, around almost a year from now, will be the 40th anniversary of the first Columbia shuttle launch. And I anticipate the same amount of press on us and for the memorial to that shuttle. Any questions on the space center?
Questions. I just have to say, you've done such a phenomenal job, and we are so grateful for your leadership and all of these different programs that have enriched the lives of our children in this community and surrounding communities, because we know that the, some of our programs, our many of our programs have brought children from surrounding communities. So thank you for that. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. But I have a fantastic team, and it's been incredible to see them pivot and really leverage their creativity at this time. It's really them. Same goes for the library, if I can transition.
Yes.
So this year, the library's been busy, even though we don't have a home. We have processed our 120,000 item collection physically, and now we're in the process of doing that electronically. We, the new library will transition into a completely different, an RFID electronic system. So we've had to update all the databases on every single item in the collection. It's been keeping, keeping staff busy, definitely. However, at the same time, we've also been conducting programming around the city. Before COVID, it was at various locations throughout the city. Actually, baby story time happening right here, right where I stand in City Hall or in the City Council Chamber. And we anticipate that'll continue, but probably more in a virtual platform as we move ahead. We continue to plan for the new library. Staff is coding and developing our own proprietary electronic system so that we'll be able to remotely check people, check items out within the stacks of the library or in other parts of the city without ever having to go to a main desk or anything like that. We've also expanded the Downey One card this year with Down Unified. That's a card that allows high school students throughout the city to access the library's collection just with their student ID. They don't have to have a special library card or anything. And then also in December, it was the library's 60th anniversary. We had a nice big party at the space center for that. Moving forward, we plan to open up a newly renovated library. That's a big goal for us. We also are continuing to review some of our backend, the finesse. We're coming out with all new policies that the library advisory board is helping us on. And then again, like implement outreach programming with the change now to virtual platforms. The library has really increased its amount of digital content and making it free. So we anticipate that that's going to be in demand as we move into the next year, too.
Ben, it's fair to say that even though the library is closed, you guys are pretty busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I also would like to add that the library staff is, is down from what it was before just because we haven't hired up. And we're doing at least, if not more, work with that amount of staff. Well, thanks. Any other questions?
I had a question. The Downey One card program, is it open to Downey High School and Warren High School students now?
Exactly.
Are we looking at also providing it to middle school students?
We're talking to the district. We'll probably start that up in the next school year to start to push it down at the junior high. There gets the, the age of 13 is a consent age. So we're trying to work out how that's going to work.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Great job. It's nice to see you.
Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Today, I'll be representing the Parks and Recreation Department to go over a few of the accomplishments for this past 1920, 2019, 2020, and talk a little bit about 2020, 2021 accomplishments this year. We're taking a look at our previous five years of programming and just seeing what trends are out there, what other people are doing, what our community wants. We were able to implement some fun events this year, some new things. Our breakfast with the Santa and the mayor were a hit, and people loved it as we teamed up with TLC in the school district to get some kids some toys and breakfast. It was one of the events that we loved adding this year and having the mayor there. We reviewed some of our transit timetables and implemented some applications to help riders just in real time. It was time for us to get on the app and make sure that people knew when buses were coming and how they could get them and hopefully increase our ridership as a whole. Implementing some new items from the theater RFP process, requests for proposals to expand marketing of our theater performances. The theater is a beautiful facility that not a lot of cities have, and we've attracted some great talent. So we wanted to make sure that we had some other resources for marketing that we're able to do this year. And then, as you all know, we executed our contract with our new operator for weddings, banquets, and food at the Rio Hondo Golf Club that we hope to open soon and be able to have people at. Some of our other accomplishments, 17 community events, the ones you all know and love, International Food and Music Festival that draws 35,000 to 40,000 people a year, Havana rooftop event, 5,000, 6,000 people every time, our brunch with the bunny, just the different events that we have that brings our community together and really showcases what Downey is about, something that we're super proud of, that our team does a great job doing. Our contract classes, those are the ones you see in Barbara J. Riley Community Center out on the fields, karate's and yogas and sports classes. We had over 10,000 participants there. Our rounds of golf were up at the Rio Hondo Golf Club, 64,000. Our golf course looks beautiful right now. Our numbers are out of, out of this world right now. Even through COVID, it's probably the only trend that we have going up for us. Our golf course is getting a lot of clients tell right now, we're happy about that. And this last year was great. The Downey Theater saw 76,000 attendees, which we're very proud of. The Downey Link ridership was up 105,000. We had over 182,000 seniors visit the Barbara J. Riley Community Center, senior center. If you ever go by BJR, we have something going on that our seniors love. So whether it's billiards, our senior Mondays, or any of those programs, really trying to make sure that we have programs to keep our seniors social and active and involved with what we have going on. And then just overall with 2,000 park visitors, we're a little down this year with the parks being closed here there. But when you're down and still get 2 million people to your parks, I think you're doing something okay there. Some of the other accomplishments that, similar to Ben, we've had to very much shift our operation pre-COVID. Now, our senior center and our staff are doing an amazing job. We're delivering meals every week to homebound seniors who can't leave their houses. Right now, we're about over 800. Wellness checks, those are done weekly, twice a week, that we have a list of seniors that we call and literally just say hello and have staff have a conversation with them and see how they're doing. If we don't get ahold of them, we make sure that we send a team by to their house to check on them. If we further can't get ahold of them, PD has been great partner with us in helping us go there. We haven't had very many of those, but we're at over 5,000 wellness checks on our senior population. And then our meal program, huge difference for us in what we were doing. We're, have done 18,000 meals for our seniors on a grab and go pickup program over at BJR. Roughly, it's about 1,500 meals a week. We used to do about 350 meals a week. So it's a big difference for us. The seniors have been great. We're getting new seniors and new phone calls all the time. We're not turning anybody away. HSA, which is a great partner of ours through the county, unfortunately, reached a maximum of how many people they could serve. So we started our own program. Our staff over Monica Ortiz did a great job of getting her staff together, and we started our own program in making sure that we can continue to serve meals. Janice Hans office in the Elks Lodge also had some donations for that program that were very helpful. We also created a new online recreation center, again, a virtual platform. People were staying at home and helping us flatten the curve, but we needed to help our people at home out in the community and give them some other activities that they could do. They're zooming with their kids all day. They're zooming with work all day, and they just needed some other resources. So our staff was able to come up with this online platform and give people at home about 100 different activities between fitness, arts and crafts, and enrichment activities that they could log on from home and be a part of. Some of them were links to other great resources that we're able to find. Some of them straight from our Columbia Morris Science Center and the library. Some of them were some other great partners of ours that we kept people involved. And then we had a partnership just recently in the last couple of weeks with the Downey Kaiser Permanente to start our new hashtag Downey at Home campaign. We basically told them, look, we want to keep people active and involved at home right now. We want to find a way to keep people connected and not feel down and make sure that they knew that we are still there for them. So we have various contests going on that we have there. And you can see, that's one of our staff that we started filming some of our things. The mayor came out and filmed the Mother's Day card, which was great. So we're going out and delivering some care packages and some swag bags to different residents who win some of our contests. Just to give you an example, we gave a shout out to our local graduates recently, and we had over 4,500 views on just what we clicked on for people, just giving us a shout out for their grad and being happy with them. So we've been happy to kind of rotate and change what we're doing a little bit and making sure that we can bring the community together, whatever way we're still able to do. Some of our goals in the future, obviously, our budget is a little bit different moving forward. A lot of our events are based on community regulations, gatherings that aren't going to be able to take place or have some extreme regulations from the county, which we're still waiting on. But we still plan to have some different events at our park sites once we're able to open back up and really get out there and have events at different park sites. Some, we really need to get online with a lot of our registration. This was a goal before COVID, and COVID is just going to help us with that, making sure that we don't have to have people waiting in any lines for Aspire or Aquatics or any of those things that typically in the past might have done that. Reviewing and updating our reservation policies to ensure updated and many information to get people easily online. We have a lot more shelters. We have a lot more rooms now that we want to be able to rent out. So we want to make sure that that's all seamless, that we can do that digitally and tie into our registration software. There's some other parks that we're still exploring grants for that we can get some of our pocket parks in love and get some playgrounds and some benches and trash cans over there to make sure everybody understands that our parks are important to us. Working with our golf contractor to increase our banquets and tournaments. Obviously, once we get some numbers back from the county and we figure out what we can do as far as sizes of gatherings, we want to support our contractor and making sure that we continue to get more weddings and more events there so we can keep our golf course looking beautiful. Increasing our events at the theater, again, that along with our last goal of exploring some, an annual volunteer recognition program or an event. As soon as we get some regulations from the county of what that's going to look like for social distancing and gathering, we're going to work closely with them to make sure that we can continue to increase our events and people having a good time and being able to do that. We're also looking at some things to just try to implement in the next couple of weeks virtually with our residents for 4th of July, anything that we can continue to do over this COVID period. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you might have.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say, you know, Jason, how long you been here with us?
Two years, sir.
Two years. In two years' time, you've grown from a little puppy to a big dog. You've done a phenomenal job. I gotta tell you, I'm really proud of you, man. You know what? I work side by side with you, the Foster Kid Program, all these things in Parks and Rec. And I'm just, I have a tale from the bottom of my heart, I'm really proud of you. You've done a phenomenal job. Every fastball we throw at you, you hit out of the park. So thank you. Thank you for doing a good job for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say, one of the things that I'm really excited about is a partnership with our Kaiser Permanente Medical Center. And what this means is, again, providing the mental health also component and increasing that collaboration with the Parks and Rec. These are, these are changing times, and we know that our families and our children are stuck at home. Many cases, technology is there with them. So being able to enhance those partnerships and provide meaningful, meaningful interaction and meaningful programs online and through these websites is very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just, I just want to add, you've done a great job. I know a lot's been, a lot has been thrown at you. You've created this online program so people can still be engaged, senior meal program. Just you have a lot going on, and you've done a great job. So I want to thank you and also thank you for helping me on that Mother's Day project. That was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Our chief is great, and our team loves Downey. So thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Now speaking of our big dogs, here we go.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Madam Mayor, and Council. As with the other departments, we're here to present our accomplishments and goals as well. The Community Development Department is photo driven. We like to show you what a site looks like today and what it'll look like tomorrow. And so I'll just touch on a couple of the narratives up there. We're really proud of the two art installations that we were able to get going in our downtown. We have three more coming, as well as a piece for our theater and some other variety of art for our downtown. So we look forward to moving forward with those as well. As our finance director mentioned in his presentation, one of our big accomplishments was the sale of a partial portion of our city-owned property adjacent to the promenade. And we look forward to a future redevelopment of that site as well. We've continued to work with the development team for the Los Angeles County for the American Legion site and made some progress on checking off their first milestones. And we were hoping to get them into our development application permit process in August or September of this year. And our Marriott Hotel site, if you've driven by, you'll see constant construction that's occurring on that site. They've already called for their permits of their underground plumbing and continued with the, the site work there. And we also continue with our homeless services and provided service to 10 individuals. Here's the art piece that I referenced. You noticed they're wearing the appropriate facial mask out there and being safe.
Was that your idea?
No, actually, that's the community's idea. We walked by one day and they took care of our piece, which was great.
I noticed that. That was really nice.
The other art piece here on the northeast corner of Downey 2nd also spruced up that site. And we've got a new piece coming, and these are historic kiosks with the direction and vision of our city manager thought would be neat. So we partnered with our Historic Society, and the late Larry Latimer provided the narrative with the photos, and he went back and partnered with his team as well. And we look forward to having this installed within the next two weeks. And it will go in front of the Assistance League where that trash can goes. I think it's a neat location. And also, thanks again to the Council Downtown Subcommittee, which has provided direction on those pieces as well. And we've got the southwest corner of Imperial and Lakewood. We've got Chick-fil-A that's going through plan check, and they're really going to spruce up that corner. In addition, the developer's going to clean up that inline shopping center to spruce up that facade there. And we've got some subtle improvements that really turn corners around. We had this, this gas station here on Stewart in gray, really went through a nice improvement. And then the hotel, as I mentioned, they've got constant work out there. They're, the only improvements they've had is with the late rain seasons that we had this year. They've been able to power through the COVID-19 pandemic issue. They're, they're looking to complete construction in September of 2021 and hoping to open their doors by December of 2021. And we've got various residential projects that are popping up throughout the city. This is off of Forest Street between Myrtle and Fourth on the corner. And we've got construction happening there with a future site rendering as well. And we've got more housing planned over on the west side of town. And we work in partnership with our code enforcement offices and our housing rehab program. We go in and try to spruce up problem properties in the city. And here's the before and here's an after of this site. And Kaiser, as you've seen, if you've driven by, that tower is just really coming out of the ground. They look to be completed by the end of this calendar year. And our goals, once again, as well, a lot of our accomplishments, because our projects do take a little bit of time, lead over to our goals. We're going to continue to work with our downtown to foster a new development and growth of our businesses there. Our downtown association has brought on a firm to help them with their social media and marketing. They've also brought on a firm to help them with their street maintenance. And our Rancho South Campus Sports Project, they're actually doing site work out there as we speak. They're assessing and demolishing some of the existing buildings that are in that site. That should be completed in July. They'll then start the groundwork and the grading out there in September and continue to move that project forward. And then also the light rail station, we're working in partnership with other cities and through the direction of our City Manager's Office to make sure that we coordinate all the activities with Metro and the county for that West End and a branch site. And one of our goals is to get councilmembers to solve on a scooter. We started that scooter project right before the pandemic, and then unfortunately, they had to hold up. And speaking with them last night, they did said that as they will be back out, they're assessing, you know, their presence in different cities at the appropriate time. And we've got more art coming for our downtown. Like I said, we've got two more pieces that we think are pretty cool for the downtown. These should be installed. These should be installed in July of this year. Once again, unfortunately with the pandemic, we've got some delays. And we've got this piece that's planned for the southwest corner of Downing Second, which will also incorporate an art plaza. Maserati, once again, is going through a pause in terms of its activity. You've got an Italian imported sports car and you've got the pandemic hit extremely hard in Italy, so the production went to zero. So they're experiencing a pause as well in terms of their tenant improvement plan.
Have they gone through planning commission yet, Aldo?
Pardon?
Has that gone through planning commission yet?
Which project, sir?
Maserati.
That one, the car dealership.
Yeah, Maserati actually is exempt from the planning commission. They're, they're just doing facade work, they're not doing any tear down.
Okay.
And then we've got the southeast corner of Downing Second. That project's continuing. They ran into more foundation work that was anticipated, so they had to redesign their structural foundation to get things going and also look at different slab elevations. And speaking with the owner this morning, he's still on track to get this completed by February of next year. He also has a tenant that's continued to be interested in that site. And now we're over on Telegraph. We've got medical facility that's looking to rebuild, that'll transform that, that corner as well and spruce up Telegraph. Same thing with the Kirkhill site. Kirkhill is moving out, they're, they're selling their land. We've got another industrial project that's going in on that site, which is, which is for us is urban planners. It's good to see industrial replacing industrial. We've, we've got some jobs that are going to continue to move in that area. And American Legion site, as I mentioned, the county's made some headway with their development team. They hope to have a submittal in early fall for us to review. And our sports field, as I mentioned, we have work going out there as well, so that's going to be a continued goal to get that completed. Mentioned West End and a branch. And as I mentioned as well, we had that land sale for the southern portion of what we affectionately call the Back Twenty. Now we're going to work on the redevelopment of that entire area and we had a lease modification that affects that northern area. And I'll close with Kaiser. Once again, they're looking to complete by the end of this calendar year. We think it's really going to spruce up their medical campus. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Aldo, as always, I mean, what a phenomenal job. I, you know, I know we talked about this five or six years ago about that veterans facility, but now to see it now actually making the turn, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate all you do, Aldo.
I enjoyed the pictures, so thank you. Before we go on to the next presentation, I'm going to take a two-minute break. Okay, we will reconvene our meeting. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Rodriguez, City Manager Levis, Councilmembers afar and city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to present the goals and accomplishments as well as the upcoming events scheduled for the Downey Police Department. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for the tremendous support that you continue to provide the police department. As you are well aware, our folks are out there every day doing the, a great job, a difficult job in uncertain times. And I'm, I couldn't tell you how proud I am of them, I can't express it enough. And not to alarm anybody, there's a small group protesters that is on Firestone Boulevard now moving eastbound from Paramount. There's an expectation, there's about thirty of them expectation, they're probably going to end up here at City Hall, but we have a cadre of officers ready here, standing by at the police station and also following them during the course of the protest. And I want to say that they are completely peaceful, they're obeying all the laws, the traffic laws and everything else at this point in time. So just wanted to give you an update in case you hear something while this is going on. The accomplishments for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. I want to thank the council members and the citizens of Downey. We were able to successfully complete a remodel of both our men's and women's locker rooms as well as the other restrooms within the police station. Bringing them all up to current and ADA compliance. And I want to say a special thanks to Mr. Oskui for his assistance in completing that project. Thank you, sir, greatly appreciated. As Mr. McQueen mentioned earlier, we've hired sixteen new employees during this current fiscal year, six of which were police officers. And it wouldn't be without the tremendous help of our human resources staff to get that accomplished, so thank them as well. We've had a couple of large-scale events for the police department this year. As you, as you know, we have a National Night Out that was held back in August of nineteen and we have a little over eight hundred people. That was a great event as it has been over the years and we unfortunately won't be having it this year, but it is rescheduled for, I believe, the month of October, so we'll have it then. And we've, as a police department, this past fiscal year, we acquired over eight, four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds. They're received for a number of different sourcing areas to include alcohol, tobacco enforcement, as well as Office of Traffic Safety to assist us with DUI patrols and CDL and DUI checkpoints. Over the course of the year, our personnel received over six thousand hours of training. So that's a tremendous amount considering the number of employees we have, but we do have a lot of ongoing mandatory training that our folks have to do. Usually it's in anywhere from twenty to forty hour blocks that are mandatory throughout the course of the year, so. Additionally, we did conduct our twentieth Citizens Academy class that began in February, graduated in April. So it was a great group of folks that participated in that and we're always excited for that program, looking forward to it coming up again, that I'll touch on here shortly. We have our mental health team, which is still out and about and will continue to do so, working with the LA County Office of Mental Health as well as our two sworn dedicated police officers that are assigned to that specific unit to assist with the homeless and mental health issues that are going on in town. We also can have several outreach efforts throughout the course of the year. We had the Four Coffee with a Cop events and a large-scale first-time shop with a cop event, which was sponsored and put on by our Police Officer Association, which was a tremendous success. We had twenty-five kids that were, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, they were selected through the Downey Unified School District. And they were each paired with an officer for a day of breakfast and some photos and some shopping down at Walmart and some gift wrapping and everything else. It was a great day, one that I was very proud to be part of. Our neighborhood watch groups are continuing to grow, we're now to a total of two hundred and twenty-two. Sorry about that, forgot to click the button. We also have continued to increase our presence on social media. We're now up to a little over twenty thousand regular followers, which is a substantial increase from the previous year, something we're continuing to work on and utilizing more and more. Additionally, we're still working with the school, the high schools and the middle schools and the elementary schools, the district-wide regarding school safety efforts. We have the school, a resource officer program that's currently suspended, obviously with school being down, but we're still continuing to interact with them, develop big plans for the following years. We were able to provide golf cart to Columbus High School through donations and some funding from the police department. So now all three of the Downey Unified High Schools actually have the resource carts there for the resource officers to utilize on campus, which is a great benefit for us, a great benefit for our folks to get from point A to point B as quickly as possible in need of an emergency. Our goals for twenty twenty-one are fairly simple. We want to maintain our recruitment efforts to ensure our maximum staffing levels. Next, we also, as I mentioned earlier, are going to facilitate our twenty-first Citizens Academy class. So we're going to be taking applications for that here in the near future, once we can congregate in a, in a small group again, looking forward to that. We're going to maintain our community outreach through our social media programs. As I mentioned, we have a, our neighborhood watch coordinator, Jenny Aguirre, is also kind of doubling as our social media person as well. She's doing a fantastic job for us. We have a number of folks that are on our social media team. You may have seen some of the, the tips and the, the information, YouTube videos that our folks are putting out through that group. We're going to continue to expand that as well as the standard programs, our Coffee with a Cop, the National Night Out, our Neighborhood Watch Groups. And again, the Shop with a Cop event are all going to be scheduled for this coming year. We're also going to continue to collaborate efforts with the school district. They're a tremendous partner for us, they have been for years and they will continue to be. And we do all that we can and they do all they can to support us, but we were great together. So we'll still be effective with our school resource officer program, our, our sweeps, our narcotic sweeps through the schools with our, with our police canines and just doing everything we can to provide a safe area for the kids to come and learn here in the city of Downey. We're also going to continue to seek grant opportunities. We actually received one just recently for the COVID nineteen grant for some expenditures for the police department, equipment related. I know we've got a number of things going on through the city, but we were able to acquire one already for the police department, which is great. Continue to collaborate with our coast-to-coast partners. They are a great partner to us. They, Jazz does an excellent job of reaching out. She has established a great route through the city. She's made contact with a number of our homeless folks and is in constant contact with them and keeping us updated on their statuses. And we're continuing to monitor that, so again, along with our mental health team, working together as an effective unit to help address and help folks in need that are willing to take it. We also continue to ensure our park safety through public awareness, coordinating our police services at different events throughout the year. We provide a lease for the concerts in the park, Halloween events, trick-or-treating events, a number of different things throughout the course of the year. As well as our Park Ranger program and our neighborhood preservation teams. We also are, we have developed and will continue to expand a highly trained tactical entry team. This is to assist any type of high-risk or search or arrest warrants that we might have to utilize here in town. We have a number of, ultimately we'll have two teams of folks. In the past, we had a small unit, but we wanted to professionalize the training a little bit more and have some more folks involved in the event. We need to, we want an example of that as we utilized that team yesterday in the, when we made contact and arrested with the homicide suspect from yesterday morning. So they're already proving a tremendous value to us. And next, we also continue to grow our tactical medical team. I know we did a presentation earlier in the year, recognizing the folks that promoted through that program. And we're very proud of that and very proud of them. They've got a lot of ongoing training, but we're going to do what we can to continue to expand that program to just put more tactical medics out in the field of as best we can through the course of the year and the course of the years to come. And aside from that, there's nothing else in the presentation. I know that, again, I want to express our thanks and our gratitude that the circumstances are interesting at this point in time, difficult and trying at times. But I want to assure you and everybody that our folks are doing a fantastic job and they will continue to do so. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Chief, let me be the first to tell you, you know, as police departments around the world or around the country are publicized daily in the news and the social media. And, and we saw today, the first part of our presentation, we saw the most expensive piece of our budget is law enforcement. And so I want to tell you that, and our City Manager said the truth, get what you pay for. And so I'm very proud of you. Leadership begins with you and your department. And so I'm very proud you've not only came from, you know, from the ranks and to show your people who you really are and what it really takes to be a good cop and also be a leader, but you're doing a phenomenal job with our residents. I mean, so many of our children grew up to want to be cops now. In today's world, that's not very popular, but so many of our kids like to, well, you see, you see in your pictures, you put in your presentation. They'd like to have Coffee with a Cop, they like to have, you know, a story time with a cop. They like to engage with our, with our members of our law enforcement family. So coming from that family myself, I just want to tell you, thank you for doing an outstanding job. I'm very proud of you, our chief and my friend.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I also want to comment, Chief, and I want to thank you for all of these efforts and for continuing to keep our city safe. It's certainly very interesting, very dynamic, very uncertain times. But again, the efforts to keep our city safe, to bring unity and calmness and peace during these uncertain times is paramount. And the work that your department does day in and day out, day out in our city is phenomenal. The de-escalation training and the efforts considering the situations that they are involved in too many times these days. I just want to say how much we appreciate that. And again, all the cities surround us and in other places, the unfortunate situations that are occurring and our desire to continue to protect our residents and looking at, you know, additional protection for your department by having that armored vehicle later this year, that is important. So I think that that is all part of continuing to keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if our city manager wanted to add anything? It looked like you did.
No, I think you guys have said it all. I think we're fortunate, you know, to have a police and fire department that really cares. And, and as I said, it's two-thirds of our budget, but you know, our residents deserve the best and we do have the best. So thank you, Chief, you've done a phenomenal job and I couldn't, I, I just had this conversation with Chief today and thanking him about, about what he's doing, what he's, and how he goes about doing the things that he does. So, so thank you very much, we appreciate you and we appreciate all the, the work that your, your men and women do in the field. So we have all the utmost confidence, thank you.
If I could just add?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, I can't express enough my appreciation for our folks. I mentioned earlier about the support that we get, not only from city staff and council, also tremendous amount of support from our community. Our folks are just doing an amazing job. It's, it's not often that you have to go on tactical alert, that just happened for us a couple of days ago. And as you, as you may or may not believe, you know, there was not one person who complained about it. They all reported for duty immediately, went assigned and have shown up every day. We have folks around the clock, obviously, in masks now because of the current circumstances. But they're all here eager and proud and doing the job professionally and, and no one is shirking their responsibilities. And I just couldn't be prouder of them as a group. And I'm blessed to have the tremendous folks that I have, the tremendous support staff that I have, my partners. So I just want to thank you for, for all of that. I couldn't leave here without telling you how much I appreciate them.
So I just want to say also, there's a lot of thank yous here, but I just truly, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you and our officers. Like our council member Rick Rodriguez said, leadership begins from you, from our chief. And you always show such calmness. You, you put us all at ease and we have complete confidence in you and in our officers. I've always had confidence and now we are more confident in our officers. And I know they will keep our city safe, especially during these trying times. I will pray for our city, I will pray for our officers, but I know it's all thanks to you and our officers who are out there working hard. I also want to commend you on the community outreach and our officers who are involved in the community outreach, Coffee with a Cop. I think that makes a big difference so that the community gets to know who their officers are. So I see the difference in our community. Everyone I talk to, they all say what a great police department we have and how lucky we are to have our own police department. So I just want to say thank you, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
My pleasure, thank you.
Mayor Pacheco, Mayor Pro Tem from Etta, City Council Members, City Manager Levis. I want to start by saying how honored and privileged I am to stand before you as the Fire Chief for really the past six years. And as well as being a member of the city's executive management team. It truly is a great team to be a part of and I'm, I've witnessed over the thirty-one years that I've been here, the incredible changes that have happened and working with the team, and so I'm very proud to be a part of that. So with that being said, in that time, you know, we have, I'll say we being all of us, because it takes your support, have significantly implemented many changes within this department that will better serve this community for years to come, long after all of us are gone. So you should be proud of your fire department. They do outstanding service every day to all those unnamed, they literally save lives every single day. Fire Department's mission is the the preservation of life safety and the protection of property and the environment and the preparedness of any disaster management emergencies. In addition to responding to the ten thousand five hundred calls for help every year and transporting over six thousand sick and injured patients and responding to major wildland fires throughout the state. Most recently, we've been challenged with the COVID pandemic and now civil unrest. But our firefighters are committed to serving this community, I can assure you that. It has been a very busy year. It has been a very busy year and with that, I'd like to just review a few of the accomplishments over the past year. I'll try and be brief and I won't read all these off and we've already discussed what we do every day and the firefighters are passionate about what they do and responding on the emergency incidents, that's truly what their, what their signature is. But it's been a significant year, it's been a super busy year in terms of just our fire stations, fire stations one and three, our neighborhood fire stations in those parts of the city. I can't thank you enough for the support. You know, it's since the 1950s since we've really addressed these fire stations. So it's an incredible improvement, so we're thankful for that. We also completed a major improvements in our fire communication center, our interoperability with our other agencies that we respond with on a regular basis. I didn't, I didn't bring my notes up, but one of the other things that I'm excited to share with you is the firefighter memorial. And I know it's, it's in the process and it should be completed here shortly. It's been long in the making and so I thank all of you for that. And that'll be a huge step towards making our firefighters feel valued and recognizing all their contributions that every one of them make every day. We did hire four new firefighter paramedics this past year. We're currently in the process of hiring five additional firefighter medics to be complete. One of the other major improvements that we've done over the last year was we, we've been replacing some of the, through the enterprise rental contract with the city, our support vehicles. And a lot of these vehicles have 100, 150,000 miles on them and 20 years old. So they were long overdue and it's, it definitely raises our professionalism out there within the community. We've replaced all of our radios for interoperability again and our mobile data computers on all of our apparatus. And we bring in over $3 million in emergency ground transportation every year through our transportation program. Some other accomplishments in terms of the emergency management was we developed the city's mass care plan that's needed. We've entered into agreement with FEMA regarding the IPoZ system and will be implementing that this next year. We've also acquired EOC Information Management System to respond to COVID-19 specifically. Specifically, it's the Ochi, the Emergency Management Software. We've also developed an alternate EOC site because of the capital improvements that we've had at these facilities. It's required us to also improve some of the other sites as well. Citywide, we've implemented the automated daily roster and time card system, which is a dramatic change in how we staff our daily operations. We also purchased for, in the process of finishing up, purchasing the final two automatic CPR compression devices. It's probably the most critical patients we go on are those in full arrest. These devices will provide more effective and continuous CPR during these difficult incidents. We've also replaced all of our thermal imaging cameras so we can make entry and do rescues in the, in those atmospheres. And lastly, we adopted the fire code this last year. So with that, those are a very busy year, very proud of my staff for all that they've done to implement all of this. And the goals that we have for this next year is to continue on with the capital improvement projects. We're excited about Station Two and Station Four on the east half of the city. They have their original fire stations in the 1950s and they're long overdue. We'll be working on our succession planning and we're planning to conduct a battalion chief promotional exam. Eighty percent of our command staff is at a point where we're getting close to retirement. So we're going to have to replace our senior leadership. We're going to continue to replace more of the support vehicles. But one of the big things that we're trying to implement right now in the fire department is really more of the technology. We have a lot of the, with the support of the city, our apparatus, equipment and our staffing is outstanding, but we'd like to implement more of the technologies and work smarter as well, as harder. And with that, that concludes my, my presentation. Again, on behalf of all the members of Downey Fire Department, I'd like to thank the city council and the residents for their continued support of the fire department. This concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
So Chief, I'll start by asking you, how do the firefighters like sleeping in those new fire stations?
Absolutely love it. You know, as you can imagine, and I mean, it goes night and day, it's basically their home away from home. They're, they're, you know, 24/7 through 65 for the last 63 years. And so it's the only place in the city of Downey that, the only facilities that they actually have to live and work at the same facility. So it's a drastic change.
So I asked that question because I'm probably the only one here at the city council or city staff that's had a ride in the back of that ambulance.
Yeah.
But I asked, yeah, yeah, more than once, that's right. But I asked that question because, you know, we each get four years at a time to be elected to serve our community, but it's not very often that you really get a chance to change the, the lives of public service. And so that's really, that's why I, I haven't had a chance to talk to any firefighters, ask them, how, what is it like to sleep in a room now compared to a cubicle? And what is it like to live in a brand new construction?
As I stated, I mean, it's been an incredible six years as the Fire Chief. I've been here 31 years, 31 years ago, some of these facilities need major improvements then. I've seen several Fire Chiefs come before me trying to accomplish this. So it truly is, like I said, it's a privilege and a blessing to be the Fire Chief, to implement these, to be a part of that process. And it's going to, the things we do here today and the things that, you know, that with your leadership are going to last for many, many years after we're gone.
Yeah. So thank you, Chief. Even though you're Marine Corps dad, doesn't make a difference, we still love you anyways.
Promoted yesterday.
Right on. Thank you for your service, Chief, it really means a lot.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. We've always been very proud and certainly have felt very blessed to have our own, we're Downey, to have its own fire and police departments. But now more than ever, we are so very grateful for you, Chief, and for our police department and for the work that you continue to do. And again, for the entire department, the leadership that you provide and the goals that you've, that you've brought before us and what has been accomplished also in the area of emergency management, which is so critical. And as we continue to face various things, who would have thought, that in 2020, a pandemic and all of the things that we are facing right now, knock on wood, you know, no tsunami, no earthquake, but this is, this is what we have. And so under your leadership, we are deeply appreciative of enhanced and more robust emergency management response efforts. And please thank the rest of the department and let them know how appreciative we are of everything they do.
And I can assure you that I'm very passionate about having a strong emergency management department. I've been an advocate since the time I've taken office. And as you know, and I know you're just as passionate about it, if not more, that we are the leaders in this area and it's obviously served us well and it's been, been a good thing to have available.
And I just want to end with just saying also thank you and also thank our firefighters. I know it's been a difficult time with, with COVID-19 and them being at the front line and dealing with the situation. Also to our emergency manager, Brackie Cloke, she's doing a great job. So, so thank you very much.
And as I can just close in, just by saying, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is what we're here for. This is when we step up and it's times like pandemics and civil unrest and, and the wildland fires, what have you, that's what we're here for and that's just our job and we're proud to do it.
Thank you.
Looks like they're going to let me present today.
Well, actually, I was just going to make a motion. Keep it brief, Delphino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Diva. Good afternoon, Mayor Pacheco, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present the Public Works Department's accomplishments for fiscal year 1920 and goals for the upcoming fiscal year 2021. Public Works is responsible for development and implementation of the city's capital improvement program, or CIP. The goals of the CIP are to enhance the quality of life of the residents of the community, to maintain the city's infrastructure, buildings and facilities, and to promote traffic and transportation improvements in the city. For fiscal year 1920, Public Works has completed 23 projects with a total cost of more than $18 million. So some of the significant projects recently completed include median improvements and pavement rehabilitation on Paramount Boulevard and Firestone Boulevard, repaving of 40 residential streets in Council Districts One and Two, which is the south half of the city. We completed water system improvements and pavement reconstruction on Civic Center Drive and Third Street right around City Hall, slurry seal of 80 residential streets in Council Districts Three and Four, and miscellaneous concrete repairs and ADA improvements in Districts Two and Four. In line with the city's goals of energy conservation, environmental stewardship and implementing renewable energy sources, we installed electric vehicle charging stations at six locations in the city. On the utility side, we completed water system improvements in the following areas: on Telegraph Road from east to west city limits, on Woodruff Avenue from Firestone Boulevard to Imperial Highway, on Sameline Avenue from Melva Street to Quill Drive, and on Melva from Sameline to Reeves, and also at the intersection of Patton Road and Stewart and Gray Road. Now, as part of the department's annual groundwater well rehabilitation program, we rehabilitated three wells, Five, Ten and Sixteen, and with these improvements, we obtained over $60,000 in SCE rebates and incentives, and we're estimating that the city will save $50,000 annually in energy costs. In addition, we completed design and either started construction or will start construction of the following projects in the next few weeks: median landscaping and irrigation improvements on Paramount and Firestone Boulevard. So this is now the final phase of improvement, which is installing landscaping and irrigation in the recently constructed median islands on Paramount and Firestone. Repaving of 38 residential streets in Council Districts Three and Four, for next year, we're doing the north half of the city. We're also doing the reconstruction of the pavement and traffic safety enhancements on Telegraph Road from east to west city limits, intersection widening and improvements at two major intersections in the city, Lakewood at Florence and Lakewood at Firestone Boulevard. We're installing traffic signal upgrades, modifications and traffic safety enhancements along three major corridors in the city, namely Paramount Boulevard, Stewart and Gray Road and Imperial Highway. In addition, we're reconstructing the existing pavement on Tweedy Lane from Florence to Suba and on Old River School Road from Imperial Highway to our next street. Some of our other accomplishments, we completed the pavement management program update. So we will use this to prioritize our street rehabilitation projects over the next 10 years. We also completed development of our urban forest management plan, or UFMP, which will provide a framework for the city's goals and strategies in maintaining a sustainable urban forest canopy over the next 30 years. We completed cleaning and CCTV inspections of over 40 miles of sewer mains. We installed entry monument signs at four locations in the city. So these locations are the west end of Florence Avenue, south end of Paramount Boulevard and both ends of Imperial Highway. By celebrating Arbor Day over the last two years, developing our urban forest management plan and planting more than 2,800 trees citywide, the city of Downey is once again recognized as a Tree City USA, which is a pretty major accomplishment. The city has a very aggressive CIP for the upcoming fiscal year. Our goal is to complete design and start construction of 40 projects with a total budget of more than $51 million. Some of the significant projects include intersection widening and improvements at Paramount and Imperial Highway, water system improvements and pavement reconstruction on Florence Avenue between Brookshire and Tweedy Lane. The next three projects are part of our annual program of repaving slurry seal and miscellaneous concrete repairs and ADA improvements in residential neighborhoods. We will construct sidewalks and ADA improvements to enhance walking routes to and from five schools in the south Downey area. We will install computer hardware and software upgrades to our traffic management center, or TMC. We will implement class two bike lanes and class three bike routes at various locations in the city. We have a number of water projects that are in the pipeline, so to speak, including drilling of two groundwater wells to improve reliability of water supply and service to the community. We are also constructing water system improvements on Bellflower Boulevard, Pellet Street and Ryerson Avenue. Lastly, we're constructing water system improvements and we will be reconstructing the pavement on Third Street between Old River School Road and Reeves Avenue. Other goals for the upcoming fiscal year include implementation of two water pressure zones in the city. Again, this is in line with the department's goal of improving water supply and service to the community. We're implementing a state of control system or our water and sewer system. So this will allow staff to remotely monitor and operate our groundwater wells, water pump stations and sewer lift stations. To enhance pedestrian safety and accessibility, we will install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at various locations. These are mainly high pedestrian volume marked crosswalk locations in the city. We will continue to implement energy efficiency upgrades, including installation of solar panels, airports and battery energy storage systems at city buildings and facilities. And finally, we will be developing active transportation linkages throughout the city, thereby reducing vehicle emissions, improving public health and wellness in the community and addressing safety improvements for pedestrians and pedestrians. That was my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I actually just wanted to highlight one of the things. So Delphino just read through it, the implementation of solar and energy efficiencies. We've been talking about that, but that's actually a huge step and not only reduces our carbon footprint, but we're looking to save roughly between $200,000 to $400,000 a year annually in energy savings. So as I mentioned earlier, that we're always looking for cost savings and that's another one that will continue to pay dividends for about 25 years moving out. So we're working on that and that'll move forward as well. One of the things that Public Works doesn't always get the credit, but they, they're one of the busiest public works departments really in the region and they do it with a very limited staff. Every year, Delphino comes hat in hand, asking for more positions and I have to say, no. And, but it's, it's what's kept our labor costs down, but they do a remarkable job, as do every department head in here in terms of working with the limited staffing that they have. So thank you, Delphino. We're excited about some of these projects coming forward.
I just want to say thank you also. I know I text you an email quite often about different streets and different issues that residents are having. And as always, you're always quick to respond and you always take care of the situation. So I know our residents are extremely happy that you always take everything, take care of everything in a quick manner. So thank you very much. I appreciate all your hard work.
Madam Mayor, I just also want to express my, my thanks to you, Delphino. In a city of almost 113,000 people and as was indicated at the very beginning about and as was indicated at the very beginning of this budget workshop, where we are in terms of FTEs per 1,000, it's it's really limited. And yet, we are often, I know my council colleagues and I are often hearing from residents regarding potholes or our streets. And again, we are, we have limited staff and I know that you do the best you can. We do the best we can with the resources we have to maintain our infrastructure and ensure that we are taking care of the requests that come our way. So given all this, I just want to say thank you for the projects that, the accomplishments that you've shared with us today. And I know that there's definitely a lot more work ahead in the coming year. But I thank you for prioritizing and thank you for listening to us and the requests of our constituents.
Thank you very much and I really appreciate your support.
Thank you. So it looks like that was our last report.
Council members, that is our last report to you. Again, we're proud to present a balanced budget, given what's what's happening now. Certainly, we're going to keep an eye on the ball and make sure that if we need to pivot, we will do that as we always have done. And it's it's only because of the hard work of the people that you see in this room that we're able to be in that position. It's an enviable position to be relative to other cities, the county, the state, whoever it may be. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to just add that I also appreciate everything that you've all done. Great presentations, great, great job. It's because of all your hard work and dedication that it makes our job appear a lot easier. So so thank you. Thank you very much. And that concludes our meeting. This special city council meeting is now adjourned.